Good evening, I want to welcome everybody to the August 6th, 2018 special session of the Jersey Village City Council. Madam Secretary, a quorum is present.
Yes.
Very good. We've got a lot to discuss tonight, but first, we're going to convene executive session, and we'll come back and engage in conversation in open chambers afterwards. So with that, City Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 6:01 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, consult with Attorney. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations and connections with the following item: One, pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, consult with Attorney. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, and Section 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, consult with the City Attorney regarding cause number 1061305, Jones Road Holding Limited versus the City of Jersey Village, Texas County Civil Court at Law II, Harris County, Texas, and cause number 1074, 704 Jones Road Project Limited versus the City of Jersey Village, Texas County Civil Court at Law III, Harris County, Texas. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. The impromptu town hall took place, democracy at its finest, absolutely, all right. The closed session was adjourned. The closed session was adjourned at 6:56 PM, and no official action or vote was conducted All right, when I move into item E, the special session continued. Item one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve resolution number 2018-48 for the purchase of approximately 23.34 acres of land southeast of US 290 on either side of Jones Road in Jersey Village, Texas from Jones Road Holding Limited for the sum of $5,250,000 pursuant to the agreement of the settlement that claims asserted by the Jones Road Holding Limited and cause number 1061305, Jones Road Holding Limited versus the City of Jersey Village, Texas County Civil Court at Law II, designating the fund from which the purchase price will be paid and authorizing the City Manager to take all appropriate necessary steps to complete the purchase. Let me go and get some comments kicked off this evening tonight. We've got some really exciting things going on in our city, and I think this is a great opportunity for us to discuss them and talk about the future of our community and how we're going to move forward. So, what I want to do a little bit this evening, start off our comments, give a little background, a little history, clarify some things, then I'm sure City Council is going to have a robust discussion on this resolution. But I want to start back in 2012, when I first campaigned for City Council. My stump speech, which I could probably recite right now because I knocked on hundreds of doors, was "Public Safety, Economic Development, and Taking Advantage of Our Upward Trajectory." The message of economic development resonated with almost every single person I spoke with. And that's what we're here to discuss tonight. The City of Jersey Village is about 92% built out. As many people are aware, we're inundated with car lots, warehouses, and industrial complexes. While they are valuable commercial neighbors, they leave our community lacking the type of retail, entertainment, and restaurant options that other communities, both old and new, have. So for many years, Jones Road dead-ended in Highway 290. When Jones Road was extended to Highway 529, it opened up some of the last remaining undeveloped land in Jersey Village to develop. And at the same time, high-speed rail began gathering steam in the ultimate pathway running along Highway 290 in the vicinity of Jersey Village property on Jones Road. Communities that have rail stops see increases in property value, retail services, and sales tax. To be a stop along the rail is very beneficial for the community and surrounding neighborhoods. City government, at that time, realized that if the Jones Road corridor was not zoned to encourage a mixed-use development that would support a rail stop, the property would almost assuredly become more car lots, warehouses, and industrial locations. The city government instituted a form-based codes to direct development in the area into a mixed-use, high-density development to serve a potential rail stop and to serve the Jersey Village community. These codes dictated what types of establishments and their appearance. They're supposed to comport with the longstanding needs and wishes of our community. This area became known as the Jersey Crossing. I was a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee at that time, and I remember specifically asking the consultants, "If there was no rail, does this Jersey Crossing make sense? Is it sustainable for our community?" And I was reassured that it was. So since the inception of the codes, the Jones Road out-of-town property owners have brought forth several development plans that were in no way close to the vision, needs, and wants of our community. I sat down with the property owners on multiple occasions to seek a path to develop this property. And it became obvious to me that the property owners were looking for the easiest path possible to sell this property, which meant car lots, warehouses, and industrial development. I told them, and I was very firm, and I was very adamant, that the owners, I was very adamant to the owners of this, that our community deserves better than car storage lots and warehouses in this area. So we're at an impasse. So at that impasse, the two largest property owners retained the same legal counsel to file suit against the city claiming that our zoning ordinances were a governmental taking. Basically, in essence, our form-based codes reduced their property values to zero. The city rightfully intended, and were justified, that our zones were legal and they did not constitute a governmental taking, and we set to vigorously defend this lawsuit. Now, as in many cases, negotiated settlement agreements are preferred to protracted costly litigation. For one of the plaintiffs, myself, Councilman Holden, Mitchum Wobenhorst, City Manager Bleece, and our attorneys, conducted an all-day mediation with the property owner. A settlement agreement was reached, thanks to the creative construction of Councilman Holden, where the city would purchase a six-month option to purchase the property for $5.2 million with the ability to purchase another six-month option to settle the lawsuit. If during those option periods, the city or an assigned party did not execute that option or in essence buy the property, the city agreed to abandon the form-based codes and begin the rezoning process to allow for the property owners' desired uses, again, car lots, warehouses, and industrial development. So the reason for this agreement was for time. The city needed time. And so why did we need this time? Well, at last year's budget retreat, I explained to staff and council that for too long, we've waited on the Jones Road property owners to promote Jersey Village. The same property owners that don't share our same goals and visions for this community. Now was the time for the city government of Jersey Village and its elected representatives to step up and market our city and the Jersey Crossing to developers. City Council and staff agreed with this fresh directive and began laying down plans to incentivize development in the Jersey Crossing. Steps included developing a tax increment reinvestment zone, or the TERs, to direct increased property values, to increase the property revenue in the Jersey Crossing to fund infrastructure programs. There was also an understanding the city would entice developers with sales tax rebates and other economic incentives at our disposal. In addition to that, the City Manager and myself engaged actively contacting developers and providing marketing materials for our community. Over the last year, we had numerous meetings and conversations with local developers to discuss our city center vision for the Jersey Crossing on Jones Road. The conversations were all positive, and it was universally agreed that our area needs and can support this type of mixed-use development envisioned in the Jersey Crossing. No developer said it was unreasonable, ill-suited, or unsustainable. Over the last several months, negotiations with developers have been gathering momentum. Developers with means and expertise have confirmed their desire to move forward with the shared mixed-use version for the Jersey Crossing. As a result of these exciting developments, the city entered into a similar settlement agreement and option with the second property owner and plaintiff. This was to ensure the city had control of the property to transfer to this developer. The option on the previous settlement agreement is due to lapse this month. The city requested an additional option period in order to maintain control of the two properties throughout the development period. The property owner refused to grant another option, leaving the city to either purchase the property or lose it to rezoning and forever abandon our community's vision for the Jersey Crossing. So that's what we're here tonight. We're here to discuss this property purchase in the Jersey Crossing for the agreed-upon $5.2 million. I would like to say that I don't want to buy this property, and I wish there was some other way to preserve this property. However, time is unfortunately not on the city's side. Either we buy this property or we lose it. So therefore, I'm advocating that the city purchases property to preserve it for the needs of this community. And so with that, I want to clarify a few things. I would not be advocating purchasing this property if there's no real developer in the picture with means and a confirmed desire to build in the Jersey Crossing. Only because there's real momentum with development do I advocate us taking this course. The purchase property price of $5.2 million is under the appraised value the city has received from independent appraisals. The city conducted its due diligence, and we would not be overpaying for this property. I see the city as simply holding this property and preserving it temporarily in order to transfer over to interested developer parties in the very near future. If for any reason the city, the development were to fall through, the city would not be in a compromised position. Our city revenues are strong, and our fund balances are very healthy. This is a valuable asset that could be rezoned and sold if development was to fall through and no other developers were to be interested. So there's been a lot of sensitive negotiations that have transpired over the last year, both economic and legal, much of which was so sensitive that it took place legally behind closed doors. But, and I want to stress this, I can tell you with complete confidence that your city officials have been working diligently, honestly, ethically, and in the best interests of this community, its neighbors, and our friends. So I've been looking forward to this opportunity, to share with everybody the exciting news that we have going on, and I look forward to sharing the more good news to come with economic development in our great community. Those are my comments. I want to open it up for council for their comments on this resolution. Open it up for council comments.
I'll go ahead. Most of the time, you see us up here on these resolutions and motions, and you know, there's very little discussion, and he calls for a vote, and five hands go up. But this is not one of those issues. This one took a lot of discussion, a lot of meetings, and we had people on both sides on the issue. As Mayor pointed out, our hands were tied by time limits with the lawsuits, and I actually put forth the idea of having a referendum vote on this, but the time constraints put on us and the fact that they wouldn't extend the option period took away that possibility because it takes time to conduct something like that. So, bottom line of it is, I feel that City Council has a responsibility to compete with the neighboring communities, to provide the things that the new developments provide. People leave your community, and you get left behind, and your community's, the property values will go down. You just, you fall behind, and you become a place that's looked at negatively instead of with a positive outlook. I want this community to keep on growing, and I'm going to vote for this just because I think this is the right thing to do. I don't see that there is a lot of risk in the city purchasing this because the land value is what it is, and I really don't see that we can hurt ourselves by buying it.
Mayor, I appreciate your synopsis of how we got to where we are today. It's been a very, very long road to get where we are. You can't explain where we are today in five minutes. There's just so many other facets to this transaction, to this whole process. That being said, we're in a position to even consider buying this land because of the fiscal restraint, our conservative spending. If you look at our fund balances as a percentage of our income, we far exceed probably any other city in this area. You can probably look that up. So, the city has been conservative, we've been diligent in our spending, you can look at our budgets, we are reinvesting in the city. However, it's my opinion that the city should facilitate the development process, help developers get from point A to point B. The city's purchase of this property with the funds that we have through a very conservative approach, fiscal approach... Apologize, I lost my train of thought, I was trying to listen to the radio. I think it exceeds, it kind of exceeds our authority, if you will. Not our authority, but really our prerogative. I think we should facilitate the process, not be the process. We do have people interested, but as far as I'm concerned, they're not far enough in the process for us to justify this purchase. I wish nothing more than for this development to be successful. It's great for Jersey Village. If it happens, everyone is a hero. But this early in the process and at this time, I think it's a bad move on the city's part to purchase raw land.
I, you know, obviously, I respect all of what Greg said. You know, we've had a lot of very passionate debates over, I think at this point, hours concerning this subject. So whatever one is seeing here is kind of almost the summary of what we've been hashing out for quite some time in executive session. You know, obviously, I think that it's not ideal. You know, I'm a big believer that cities should, any government, should to a large degree be very, play kid gloves when it comes to the free market. So I can appreciate the extraordinary situation that we're in, the extraordinary sort of proposal that's before council today. That being said, when we were looking at this particular transaction, you know, I made every effort to try to ask all of the questions that I thought I could regarding all of the ways this could potentially go wrong. You know, one was, you know, let's look at the value. And we got an appraisal done, and the appraisal answered the question that this was good value for the city. We had questions regarding how this might affect, let's assume worst-case scenario, that we don't find a developer. Obviously, that's not an issue right now, but if something were to happen and that falls through, and we have the property for longer, how does that affect our ability to continue to provide all of the things that are our prerogative? And all of the answers we've received are that we will be able, because of the balance that we have, that we will be able to continue to do all of the things we need in terms of making needed capital investments, ensuring that we have police and fire, and provide all of the services that people expect us to provide. And the fact that we are able to do all of those things, the fact that we have done the due diligence to ensure that this is an investment that we are not making unreasonably in terms of the value, in terms of the price being paid, that gives me some reassurances and makes me feel more comfortable with the fact that we're doing this. You know, as the mayor mentioned, we obviously would rather that we have found a developer early enough that we could have gotten it done under the current options, and that just wasn't in the cards. But, you know, I know that we have gotten to the point where we have the balance that we have because we have been very conservative. But if that is always our stance, you know, what is the point at which we say we have found something that it's worth spending that balance on? If we are a landlocked city who has very limited opportunities to pursue development above and beyond what we have seen thus far, if we pass up this opportunity, what is the next opportunity? What is the next project that's worth investing in? What is the next step that we have to take this city and to put it on the next level to ensure that it's able to compete in, you know, an environment where we have communities in Cypress and along 249 and along the Beltway and I-10 that are providing far more opportunities, particularly for young families? And I know sometimes people smirk a little bit when I mention young families. But honestly, who do you think's going to buy your home when you're ready to sell? When you get to a point where either your estate or your family has said, you know, it's time to go ahead and downsize and move somewhere else? If you're not a community that's attractive to families in their 20s and 30s, you're not retaining the value of your home, period. And the reality of it is that those families are looking for things that we're attempting to develop here today. So, I appreciate the concern about that amount of money being spent, but I think that we have a very good sense, as good a sense as you can have in buying anything, that it is a solid value and that it has a high chance of succeeding. And so, I'll just finish by saying I'll let the future be the judge of whether I'm correct on that. And if I'm not, I'll own it, but if I am, I'm going to own that too.
I can kind of understand the situation that some of y'all are in, and that this came up last minute. I was sworn in and learned about this about three months ago, and it was a learning curve. This conversation's been going on for more than a year. Would we have preferred to put this out to a vote, like Greg had said? Absolutely. There were some discussions where we tried to do that. We're limited by timeline, and there was constraints, and doors were closed that are outside of our control. The best and correct action at this point is to purchase the property. We have very well-qualified appraisers who say this is good value for the city, this is a smart deal to make. We have a development interest that if it were to fall through, we can still recoup our funds out of this deal. But this development is what, as Bobby pointed out, the 20s and 30s that are going to be buying these houses. This is what they're interested in. It's things like the splash pad and the dog park that make this community attractive. And that is what it is. The previous three elections have shown that very clearly. So, without any more to do, I am going to be voting for this purchase.
So, I've been on council since 2016. I think the very first executive session that I sat down in was about this. That's how long this has been going on. I get tired of saying it, but I grew up here, and I left in 2001, went into the military, and I came back in this place when I bought my home with my wife. This place is exactly the same. That's great. Great police, great fire, but I think it's the consensus among anybody who looks here. We have been bypassed by development. We have not been proactive. We have been reactive. And honestly, prior to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, prior to Austin Bleece joining us, we really have not tried very hard to market our land. As Justin mentioned, we have landowners that don't have the same vision that we have. I always get asked, "Hey, why do we have so many car dealerships?" The land's owned by car dealerships. It just is what it is. Why do we have motels? Owned by a guy who wants to put a motel there. There's not really a lot that we can do and honestly that we should do other than use what the state gives, the rights the state gives us to influence the market in a little bit, a little way, to make development happen that matches the character of our neighborhood. I think we have pretty good authority on what the character of our neighborhood is. All of us knocked on doors when we campaigned. We, you know, we, I mean, literally seven miles on the last day of early voting, I walked 7.25 miles, knocked on hundreds of doors. My daughters met every dog in Jersey Village. To me, is this the will of the citizens? We campaigned on it. It's not a secret. And you go to the polls and you vote for the people to do what they campaigned on. And it would, to me, it would be a violation of the trust that the people who checked the box for me, put me in office to do, to not vote for this. No one wants to be here. No one wants to be backed into a corner where you either have to make a purchase or you have to give it up completely. So, no one wants to be here. I think Greg put that pretty well. No one wants to be here, but the unique situation that we're put in by option periods, by where we are along with interested developers puts us where we are right now. Does this make fiscal sense? Yes. It's unique property. We talked to appraisers, and I think that was a very fair appraisal. It almost immediately puts us in an equity position. I think that as a business owner myself, that makes fiscal sense to me. The other thing that really worries me, that keeps me up at night, that when we talk about, I've gone through how many budget workshops, and the big concern is revenue. We've survived Highway 290. We took a conservative approach with that situation. Thank you, Mike Castro, for that. But, coming up, we may not have the freedom to rely on property taxes anymore, and I don't want to rely on property taxes anymore. As a matter of fact, when I campaigned, I want that pie chart to move to where our sales tax base is higher than our property tax base. That's a sustainable way for us to move forward as Jersey Village, as you know it, as I grew up in, and keep it the way it is without putting the burden of taxes on property owners. The only way, the only revenue source that we have, there's two, property, well, there's a few, but the main ones are property and sales. And if we're not moving that sales tax pie chart in the correct direction, the state of Texas legislature is going to cap us very soon, and we're not going to have really a lot of options. Keep in mind, every dollar spent in Jersey Village, half a cent goes to crime control and prevention. There is a taxing district where several salaries of our police department are paid for by sales tax. That is something that we never, ever flinch on, even in agreements with CEMEX, with Chapter 380 agreements. We never waver on that, and we should not waver on that. So, in my opinion, if you want to commit to the services that we all have grown accustomed to, that we all love, that I grew up loving, that I rely upon every day, almost every day, is if we want to keep that up to snuff, then we have to do this. We have to increase our sales tax base. That's something that every one of us agrees on, that's something I campaigned on, and that's something that I want to do. So to me, it's a dereliction of duty to just give up right now. This is where we are right now. This is not buying it for fun. This is literally, we either do this, and we continue down the path that everyone, not everyone, but most citizens, the majority of citizens, I can comfortably say, want to see, or we give up today. It's the end today. So it's either, when it really boils down to it, it's either do or don't. And I say do.
Any other comments on the resolution? Seeing none, looking for a motion on the resolution.
I'll move, we approve resolution number 2018-48.
I'll second. There's a motion, there's a motion in second. You can address... Thank you, Simon. There's been a motion in second on the resolution. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Zoning Ordinance Number 2018-15, amending the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2017, ending September 30th, 2018 by increasing line item 0112-6570. Land acquisition amount not to exceed $5,250,000 for the purchase of approximately 23.34 acres of land southwest of US 290 on either side of Jones Road in Jersey Village, Texas, from Jones Road Holding Limited pursuant to an agreement to settle the claims asserted by Jones Road Holding Limited and cause number 1061305, Jones Road Holding Limited versus the City of Jersey Village, Texas County Civil Court at Law II, Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and councilors, this is the budget amendment to budget for the funds to purchase the property.
Any discussion on the ordinance?
We didn't discuss it with the last resolutions. I want to bring it up now. There's the necessity of conducting this environmental hazard assessment before we purchase the property. So before we turn loose of the funds, I would like some guarantee that that's going to happen.
We will make sure that all the due diligence that we need to do is completed before we purchase this property.
Very good. Any other questions regarding the ordinance?
So I believe the previous, the motion that passed included doing everything, all items included in purchasing property.
All right, looking for a motion on the ordinance.
I'll move, we approve ordinance number 2018-15.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, seconds or any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. As if my arm hasn't gotten enough of a workout with the gavel, this meeting is adjourned.